Need a motion to approve the revised agenda.
Motion to approve the revised agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
This evening, we have a acceptance certificate from Safewise for Elko New Market being the safest city in America.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
Minnesota. Well, to me, it's America.
You can make that argument.
I mean, it could be. If it's safest than Minnesota, it should be America.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Public comment. Is there any public comment this evening?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good to see all of you. We rarely see you all together.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Is there any public comment this evening? Going once, twice, three times, public comment is closed. Consent agenda.
Josh?
I'd like to pull letter G from the consent agenda and put it under general business, I assume.
Yep. Item G becomes item A.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
The, before, seconding the, the contract with Ideal Energies. I know there were some that had questions. I, was I the only person that had questions on the language in that contract? No? Alright, well then, no objection.
I, I, I asked questions before, so...
Alright, well, I did too, but I just want to make sure there wasn't others. Alright, I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved.
Mr. Mayor, council, if you don't mind, I'm gonna head for home. Be careful, it's starting to snow and roads are starting to a little fall. Thank you again for the presentation, I appreciate it, and thank you for your support.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you for everything you do. Be safe out there.
See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
No public hearings, general business. Item A.
So, item A under general business is the ordinance amending the definition of residential care facilities. Councilmember Berg had raised a question with regards to the title of the definition for the type of facilities we're talking about, and is asking to change it to be more consistent with how it's referenced in the state rules, regulations, and statute as programs rather than facilities. The city attorney has reviewed that request and has indicated that there's no problem to with making that change. So, we would be asking the council to approve ordinance number 166, and amending that ordinance to reflect that change in the reference to residential programs.
And then, then there'll be the follow-up cleanup of the various, where care facilities is located in each of the different residential zones that's permitted use.
Yes, throughout.
Yeah. Throughout. Okay. See, this one is the one I cared about, so I didn't look at the other stuff. Oh, and then, one other, one other thing too is the 245D versus 245B, so that'll be...
Yes, we'll amend that reference.
Okay.
Yes.
Can we change it throughout the ordinance without changing the book?
Yes, yeah. It's, it's not a huge substantive change, it's a reference to a definitional term, so, yeah.
Well, just for clarification purpose, and I am passionate about this stuff. The reason, we want to get rid of the word "facilities" in that whole concept because this relates to assisted living establishments, residential group homes, and as we're trying to navigate what CMS and DHS wants us to live within the whole home and community-based settings rules and things like that, if we keep using the word "facility" to apply to what are supposed to be residential things or apartments which are assisted living establishments, everybody says assisted living facilities, it's completely wrong. There's no such thing as an assisted living facility in the state of Minnesota, and it's unique in Minnesota, which is one of the really cool things about the way that it is. So, keep an eye on the elder abuse stuff that's going on at the Capitol, and there will be strong advocating to not go down the assisted living license route merely because the company I work for, we provide assisted living services to individuals with disabilities, and they would no longer be allowed, permitted to live in a licensed facility to be able, because then their CADDY and brain injury waivers that pay for their services don't pay for them in a facility, a licensed facility. So, they have their own lease in their, in their apartments, they have, it's essentially their own place, but by purely calling it a facility, it could restrict them and prohibit them from having their services paid for, so, and so many cities just are not in line with that or in tune with that, and that's where DHS is trying to clean up a lot of the 245D and A and 56 and everything, so...
I'll make that motion for that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for pointing that out, Josh. It's nice to know we're in line. Reports? Administration?
Just one item that wasn't included with other updates that I've sent out. We, I've heard from councilmember Berg, and I know I've received a call just this afternoon from the public who have concerns related to security at schools, more specifically to active shooter situations. In those cases, it appears people are approaching us at the city because really, we're the most accessible, and people don't know where else to go. Basically, what I have advised, and would advise you to do, is just point out that it's the schools, so we don't run or operate the schools, we're not associated with the operation, we don't, we're not associated with the facilities themselves or the policies associated with them, so that they should initially contact the school superintendent or their board or their district offices with regards to questions. Two, with regards to the security at the facilities, of course, the, the school district is in charge of the actual security, like how the doors are locked, entrance availability, those types of things, whether or not they have cameras, those types of technological measures that are in place. Then, with regards to law enforcement presence, although, for instance, with Eagleview, it's in our community, so if there's an incident, meaning if something happens at the school, somebody calls 911, we respond. If there's an active shooter incident, we would respond to that. But with regards to a regular presence like school resource officers or SROs, that's actually provided through the New Prague School District, or the New Prague Police Department for the New Prague School District, which includes Eagleview, so they, New Prague, so when they have a school resource officer there, he's coming from that department, so that, we aren't participating in that, and of course, with the Lakeview School District, it's the Lakeville Police Department that provides those SROs, so we aren't actively involved in that SRO process. And as far as facilitating that discussion, I've suggested to people, if they would like a community discussion on, it'd be best to work with the school district because they're the center of that, and we can't compel the parties who really have, directly, the primary stakeholders to participate in that discussion, because that's been one of the questions that's been asked, is, well, there should be a community discussion on this topic, can the city facilitate it? And although we might participate if we're asked to, or asked to play a role, but we're, and although it's a good policy discussion, we're not really the center of that discussion, it's related to safety at the schools, so the schools is really where the discussion should take root and be held primarily.
I would imagine, and maybe this is an assumption, but people have likely been contacting the schools, or New Prague schools in particular.
They have. I know that today, an email went out from the New Prague School Superintendent on that topic. I had sent an email to him earlier in the day saying, hey, we're getting contacted on this issue, there might be correlation between those two things, I'm not sure. I also had an op, I had a meeting this afternoon, actually, with the Lakeville City Administrator and the Lakeville School Superintendent, and this topic did take up a good chunk of that meeting as to what the schools are doing. I understand from the school superintendent that their board is talking about having a topic-specific special meeting that would basically be around facility security that hasn't been scheduled yet, but they're having, that's something that's on their, on their dashboard, and they were planning on having that discussion, actually, before this incident had occurred, it's just ends up being unfortunately timely.
And we're planning on having the New Prague Superintendent at first date of the school update at which meeting?
I believe it's the first meeting in April, April 12.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Give them some time to get some things worked out. We'll say this, from what I've read about the shooting in Florida, our schools are already much safer than that school ever was, even though they had three armed officers.
Right.
But it was several buildings, and all the doors were open, and anybody could enter anytime, so...
I hate to even say it, but Josh, would you...
Well, as I was doing this whole Safewise thing, I was like, crap, did they jinx it? Because that city was named the safest city in Florida as well, so it's just like, you know, as much as you can do, and...
That just shows it can happen.
Right.
Our schools have already taken care of a lot. We, they had the incident in New Prague a couple of years ago, and even though nothing happened, it brought all, brought a lot of, a lot more security to all the schools in Scott County and in the area, so...
Well, I'm sure everyone's heard about the ORNL threat.
Okay, on to public works, there's nothing, police, there was anything, no? Nothing from fire engineering?
Nothing to report.
Community development, anything? No? Parks, any questions on the parks? Okay, or two, scale, scale was basically legislative update, and I think we were three of us there.
Four.
Do you guys know what the priorities are, our main priorities? I suppose I can look it up.
Bob's on the executive committee, probably best to talk.
Well, it's, they cut it way down, it's basically just policy and bonding issues, there's only, we went with five, so it wasn't, there isn't much, the rest of the issues that scale, all the issues that scale had before are on our, on our list, but they cut it way down to just five. One of the policy issues is the, now the eminent domain issue, so, something that we can maybe get done. We only got burned by it once, but other communities have been burned more, but...
The, the other issue that, since it's a bonding session, is getting bonding for the West Metro Medical Examiner's Office. Basically, the current facility is undersized and outdated, and that's something that affects us because our coroners and, for those types of things, need to go to that facility, and so there's a big interest on that, and it's a regional facility, and for whatever reason, the legislature has been hesitant to, to fund it, like they have similar facilities in the past, so, that's, that's a big push as well.
Finished, are you done? Sorry. Wasn't there also talk about the gag order with the Dan Patz?
Yeah, there's always talk about the gag order. It was, it was a big, a big item on the gag order because it's, was Barry Stock's last time he could talk about it unless we invited him back, which I'm sure he will. That's his pet project, but the other, the other thing was, the other things were like money for a residential care unit for mental health in Scott County, yeah, so, or Scott Carver County, where, you know...
So, scale's actually supporting that?
Mm-hmm. I think that's pretty, MVTA isn't till the end of the month, and it's actually their driver of the year awards night, so... I-35 Solutions?
Kate didn't provide me with anything to update.
Trish?
Trish.
Excuse me. Actually, that would have been...
That would have been asked first.
Yeah, last time.
Chamber of Commerce?
What's that?
Want to tell them about the meeting?
The chamber meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Feedback of how it was for you?
Sure, yeah, I'd be curious what, if any, feedback from the chamber there might be, but I did attend the chamber board meeting, was it last week?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It was a good meeting, it, I think Don was getting kind of irritated with me because we over the, a lot of time, but, yeah, I got good questions from people, yeah, it, you know, I think more than anything else, it's, and they, the board members that were there had really positive things to say about Tom and Renee and what you've done to go into the meetings, providing good updates. I think Don may have emailed the rest of the council as well, it's, I think there is some benefit from getting a different kind of voice and a different perspective from the city with council members, you know, once in a while attending the meetings in lieu of city staff, you know, but I tried to have a very frank conversation about just different things that come up and different concerns that were had, and just be honest and direct, and, I mean, the reaction I got from people was fairly well, but I don't know if everyone just slammed me after I left, but...
No, they were all very thankful that you were there, and open and honest, and willing to listen, and answer the questions they had.
I, I think stuff like this, and I don't mean me particularly, but I mean just the cities involved and then going to them rather than having them always come here, I think that's, that's going a long way towards improving that relationship and improving the functionality of trying to work together. Josh has opinions of all.
Josh gets to go next month.
I'll wait, I'm perfectly fine. My body language, sorry.
That's, I have a feeling I don't have anything exciting to say beyond what you have to say.
No, I, I signed up to go to the next one in March, or volunteered, no, she, I think we'll get to go, hopefully. You know, I, I just think it's silly that we wouldn't have the two experts, or a, one of the experts there to talk about updates with the, you know, that actually know the ins and the outs of stuff. Yes, I agree that having one of us there to ask more of those other types of questions that have nothing to do with the details, I, I mean, I, when I saw that email, I mean, it's just, again, it's another, it's another thing that shows that they're fully not, she, Don, who wrote the email, is not fully wanting to work with city staff, it appears, and trying to exclude them out from the process when they have all the detailed information. So, I mean, I'm more than happy to go in conjunction with city staff, so that they have the details and development updates and stuff that I'm not going to be able to answer, and I'm not going to get, you know, pressed to answer anything that I don't know. But it just, it's, it's a reflection of the ongoing, persistent, whatever it is in the room that needs to move on, and, and until it's moved on, on that end, it's not going to get any better, and I'm sorry, it's just, it, the, the email just rubbed me completely the wrong way, so, I mean, I responded back in five minutes, said, sign me up for March, I'm happy to go, and I'll say this exact same thing to them, because I think we need to have the back and forth stuff, and I, I just, it doesn't make sense to me why they wouldn't want that, especially if they're not going to be coming here to get the updates, they don't come to CDA to get the updates, so when are they going to get the...
Well, I can, I can address that, I mean, they're, the, the updates, and I, I don't think Tom or Renee would disagree, can be fairly repetitive, I mean, it's kind of the same general stuff, and they, they pointed out, they appreciate getting the information, but it is, it tends to be kind of the same information over and over again, and they do like, you know, I, I asked Don before the meeting, and I said, you know, what do you want me to say? And it was, you could kind of see the frustration with her, and it wasn't a frustration towards the city, it was just, what is the concrete plan the city is going to do to bring stuff here? You know, we, we get good updates, we hear good things and all that, all this is great, but at the end, at the end of the day, they want results, and I don't think that's unreasonable to ask that, but you, you're picking up a different tone than I picked up. I, I saw support when I was in the room.
Well, and maybe, and that's where they flop every time they write a, a letter or an email in this type of way, and maybe they get frustrated by hearing these constant updates, but that's the reality of it, and I'm sorry, we can't do a lot to bring in businesses and/or other things if they don't want to come, and, and so, we, as much as we can look at our fees in different ways to be more attractive and everything else, some of it has, it's the finger pointing and the blame that it's all on the city, what is the city going to do to bring in more, what is the city going to do to do this, and there's no ownership of the chamber or the businesses or the developers, and what are they going to do to also help in this situation? And that's where these things, it is always one-sided, and that's where I get frustrated, because there's not certain things we can and can't do, and it's not going to matter, and I would rather them have more of a relationship with city staff than, you know, us, because we come and go, and we're going to come and go, and hopefully, our city staff are going to be here a long time, so, you know, even up at the Capitol, I'm going to be best friends with Legislative Assistance Committee, I'll get to know the legislators, but they're not as important as those people that are there on a regular basis, and I, I don't see that there's that connection, and, and they're just looking for people to blame, or something to blame, and they want more business, I get that, so do we all, so...
I, I think what they're looking to, and what they're looking for is, is there, we have to let them know what policies we want to put in place for staff to follow, to try to bring things. They want to see ideas, and as it is, it's still, I think there's, they're looking at status quo, and we don't, we're not trying anything new, we're, we're not looking to try anything new. I mean, we're, we're going through all this, we're going through the exercises, which is good, looking at the fees and trying to find things, but that's what they want to know, what are we going to be doing? We're going to be trying, looking through the fees, and we're going to be looking for ways to try to make them, make, make it equitable, or to bring people, and what, what can we do? They're looking for those explanations rather than, you know, a concrete plan, or this is what we're, these are what the developments are doing. I think they're looking for what our individual ideas are.
I was just going to say, I, I think what I'm hearing you say is you're, it's less in an accusatory way and more of a, you're looking for a partnership where they can work, well, they're looking to work with us rather than expect delivery from us.
Absolutely, and, I'm sorry.
I know that they are also looking for direction from us and from city staff, what is it exactly, where, what are their guidelines? Where do you want them to fit into the bubble of trying to get developments here? Do you want them out there talking to businesses and bringing them to you? I mean, I think they kind of need a streamlined, a guideline as well, is what they're looking for, of what your guys' ideas as council members are, what is it that you want from the chamber? What can we do as a chamber to work with you to help you get businesses in here? And they're looking at each of the council members and Tom and Renee for that advice as well.
And my advice would be to come up with solutions and/or ideas themselves, so it's not us thinking for them and handholding the entire time, and, and, okay, if there's certain things that are, in their mind, roadblocks or barriers to development and bringing in businesses, what are they? We, we don't have to have all the answers, they can be a part of figuring out those solutions, and, and instead of constantly saying it's, it's us not coming up with the same, coming up with new ideas, sitting in the status quo, it's the same thing legislators will say to us up at the Capitol, come up with ideas, don't just come and, and say how horrible things are, what are you going to do to solve it and help be a part of that?
Is there a point where they might be overstepping their...
And I don't know what, I don't know what chambers do in other cities, and, but that's for them to figure out, that's not for me to give them direction on how to be a chamber of commerce, they need to go out and figure out how they're going to do whatever their mission is and their, their, their stuff, and...
I think from a staff standpoint, we'd be happy to chat with them about strategies as to what they could do, but to be perfectly blunt, they've never said, tell us what you think we can do in those terms, and part of that discussion has to include, and here's the resources we have available to do it. I, Renee and I could come up with a list of things that would be great that could be done, but they may all be beyond the capacity, the resources of the organization.
Right, and our resources are very thin, other than our...
Unless you transfer to the taxpayer, then, then that's, you know, that's not easy to have.
Other than our feet going out and knocking on doors, that's our resources, and maybe the people that we know, you know?
They seem, they seem to perk up, and I saw people writing stuff down when I mentioned that, and Renee, I think you and I maybe talked a little bit about this, I mentioned that, I mean, they asked, who is the headhunter? I mean, who, who is it from the city that goes out to go after businesses? And I said, well, it's kind of Renee, I mean, she has a customer relationship management system, like, and, I don't know that you use it as, as much as you did in your prior role, but, you know, the fact that they didn't realize that, that there, that someone had to ask the question, who is the person proactively going out and trying to get?
I think, I don't know, it was just coincidence or before or after, but, you know, I had run demographic reports and consumer expenditure reports, and I'd sent them to QuickTrip, you know, I'm doing that stuff behind the scenes, and...
And they didn't know that.
I don't have a lot of time to do it, to be honest with you, with all the development efforts you're getting now, and I don't have time to rewrite the zoning warrants, I'd like nothing better than to rewrite the zoning warrants, believe me, but with the number of phone calls that are coming in this spring, I don't have time, well, clearly you bagged your EDA agenda when you walked in the building.
But that was something that they liked hearing, that they appreciated hearing, that maybe they didn't fully appreciate how much above and beyond you do to, for, to help bring in businesses.
Last year, I sent that same information to at least five C-stores, you know, I...
I, I think we have to realize as a council, each one of us, every time we go someplace, and sometimes we go, I know myself, I go places simply to meet people, to introduce them to our city. I went to Prior Lake this last week to meet the, the gentleman from QuickTrip who was speaking in Prior Lake. I've talked to all the executives at Hy-Vee, and I talked to them on a bi-weekly meetings because they're there because the Shaka B store happens to be the only store, store with a big training room, so, it's, we, we have to be out there too.
One, one of the basic things that businesses, residents in a community can do is just promote their community, be out there cheerleading, this is a great place to do business, this is a great place to come and live, that, just that alone helps market your community. We've recently done a lot of Facebook posts about this, we're the safest city in Minnesota, that is imaging the city with regards to it.
I'm just watching, ready?
Those are, those are things that we can do, so, as Kate had mentioned, the resources just consist of the people they have and the amount of time that they have, those are things that we can do. Part of the discussion we can have with the chamber is, okay, what are the messages that we want to promote? We've done that. In fact, a lot of the people that sit on the board participated in the branding process where we've identified that, so maybe it's talking about, okay, how do, how can the chamber go out and help market the city? Having a real discussion with them and saying, who do you know, what contacts do you have that you can go out and promote the city? Does anybody in the room have a brother-in-law that's a developer that we can contact to bring down and, and get an in to, to chat with them or promote the city? I'm just using examples, but that's the type of thing that, even at a very grassroots level, you can do to promote, you can do to promote the community. So, those are some basic things, but there has to be some interaction, and to be perfectly honest, I'll be blunt, Renee and I went to two board meetings, and at those board meetings, we provided information ahead of time, we sat down, we asked for feedback from the board, we didn't get any, and we said, well, but we have a new board coming up. We came back, we mentioned we want to come back and continue this discussion regarding this program, we'd really want your feedback on it. We were not invited to come back. It's hard to have those types of detailed discussions when you don't have consistency with the people that are involved in those discussions.
How many holdovers are there on the board this time?
How many what?
People that were from the former board are still on the board. I mean, are, is quite a few, or...
No, there's only ten of us on the board.
So, how many are there?
A lot of them.
Almost all the same people, I have one, we have one new person, a couple have fallen off.
I mean, if, if you really want to have a discussion about strategy, you have to take some time and have it, fifteen minutes of updates isn't sufficient time to have those discussions, and quite honestly, since we've been going to their minutes, that's the time that we've been fifteen, twenty minutes to basically provide updates and respond to quite actually a large number of questions about that because they are knowledge hungry, by golly, they should be, but that's a whole different discussion, and there has to be time and resources allocated, which there hasn't been at that, at this point, so... But, that's a whole different discussion, and there has to be time and resources allocated, which there hasn't been at that, at this point, so.
So, I would just respond, because you were CC'd in that email as well, to say, state that you would like more time instead of just the fifteen minutes.
Word.
Well, and see, and I read that email, it is, is now they're removed from these meetings, and that's where we're there. I mean, that's what it specifically says in here, is that they don't want Renee and, and Tom there.
I guess I interpreted that differently.
I did too.
I read that as, it was, it was no change.
I, I think, I think for the meetings with the council people, they didn't want Renee and Tom at those, with them.
I'll be honest, when I read it, it sounded like they wanted to meet with council people, and they would like us to come occasionally, but they wanted to go through meetings with all the council people first, that's how it read.
Okay, that wasn't my interpretation.
To me, what the understanding was, is they're just, because Joe came, they didn't want the rest of the council to feel like they were not welcome. You guys are welcome to come anytime. They still want you guys there.
Well, this is what I think Josh is talking about, the communication. You two had the benefit of separate discussions outside of the email with the individual that wrote the email. When you read the email, what's conveyed is very different.
Right.
Than that. We heard that previously with communications, letters from the chamber, what they provide in writing and what they say after the fact or separately from that tend to be two different things. So, there is a communication issue that needs to be addressed with regards to that, with clarity of communication. That would be fantastic. We would love to attend. In fact, Renee and I were ecstatic when we found, when the agreement was reached that we would be attending on a regular basis to be able to develop foster that relationship and work collaboratively with the chamber to do things.
So, my understanding was you guys were always supposed to be showing up at every Tuesday morning meeting that we have, first, second Tuesday of every month. And then whoever wanted to from the council would show up as well as another voice.
That is not consistent with the emails that we've received on the topic.
Come email somebody. Well, on the months when a council member isn't scheduled, I'll have staff provide an update. So, I mean, it's, it's when one of us isn't going to be there, then staff will be there. And then it was the whole, we're going to remove, and, and maybe this is the whatever emotional side of me, then they're going to start dictating what's on our city council agenda, and they're going to remove the Chamber of Commerce update from, from here.
That was a, that's a miscommunication.
That, that, that again was another misunderstanding that they assumed that that was exclusively for the chamber rep to come. And as you saw from the update that I sent out, they just don't have the bandwidth to be able to send somebody every month. But again, it's part of the, the communication. And to be perfectly honest, we, we get the stuff via emails. Don has my phone number, Don has Renee's phone number.
Why isn't she just called?
That's my question. Because it's, it's a lot easier and you have a lot less complication than communicating via, via email.
And I'm comfortable enough, I'm going to say the exact same things I'm saying here, if I get to go on March, whatever it is.
If somebody can let Tom and I know if we're supposed to be there.
We, we just don't know.
So, if you signed up to go in March, did she ever respond back to you to let you know, "Hey, I have a council member, Berg, is coming. Do you still want to come or not?" She never did any follow-up email with you two?
The last communication was just.
Did you call me to call her and just ask her, or?
No, I'm going to just say, I, from my understanding, you know, Councilmember Berg is going to show up at our next meeting. Have you been in contact with Tom and Renee? Because they are supposed to be there at every meeting. Are they still coming, or?
This, this is what I think is part of the issue. Communication with the chamber just seems to be so difficult. And any reaction, interaction that we have with any other organization, it's a quick phone call to the relevant staff member and a quick conversation, and it's very easy. It just seems to be very awkward and painful with the chamber for the last several months.
Go ahead and give her a call.
It'd just be nice to.
I'll, I'll be at the call.
Yeah, just give her a call. Stop beating around the bush and just go straight to the phone.
Just give us a call.
Anything else on the chamber? Josh?
No, it's a cyclical thing. We'll have this conversation six months again.
I think it'll take six months.
Well, we, we, it was like July or August when we had the last letter, and it'd be six more months, and then we'll have another thing.
Okay, Regional Council of Mayors, it was, basically, they talked more about public facilities and right-of-ways and such for the cars, autonomous vehicles, and how that you can't, they want, they want, they have changes where you don't design parking garages anymore with slanted floors.
Make them flat.
Make them flat. They've actually got a new, new type parking garage where they've got slanted floors, but they're temporary. So they can reuse the building for something else. And since we are, since we are a member, I can have two guests show up, so if there's a, I, I'll pass on the topics to Tom. And if anybody's interested, let me know, and he can post, if it needs to be posted. But it is a great networking event from the simple standpoint that every, or almost all the corporations and deed and greater, greater MSP and every, all the, all these businesses are sitting in the outer circle that you can network with. It, it's a, it's, it's a good thing for our city to be there and to talk to some of these people besides talking to people from other cities. So. CCEC?
Just getting ready for the egg hunt.
Downtown Improvement Committee?
I think we're meeting next week, is that correct? Yeah.
It's like the first.
Same meeting schedule. Same meeting schedule. The same regular, same regular meeting schedule. There wasn't enough people actually to attend to have that discussion.
It's on my calendar.
Because I don't have, I still don't have it on my calendar.
And Fifty by Thirty, it's just that the Izzy is coming up. The dinner. And I'm, I don't know if all of you have gotten invitations or. One, I would suggest, the workforce Izzy, I think, is in April. I got a double, there's one in March, April, and May. And I, the, the workforce one, Josh, I think would be good for you to attend since you're on the Governor's Council. I think that would be a good one for the workforce development. And I will make sure that you get those, because you'll meet with people in our county that, and I don't understand why we're having problem. Well, I can understand why, why, why they say that sixteen to nineteen-year-olds or, or twenty-four-year-olds are the biggest unemployed group when every place in, around is desperate for help, that's inexperienced and they can't hire anybody.
There's a saying, "Figures lie and liars figure." And I think that just kind of states, you can make up a stat to support pretty much anything you want to.
I mean, I see it, they, there's some of the people that say they want to work that don't show up or show up four hours late or show up and then hide and use their cellphone. And they want to work, they, they, they want a job where they get a paycheck, but they don't want to work.
We should all be so lucky.
But that's it on the Fifty by Thirty. Any other discussion by council?
Just one thing. So, I, when, when I tipped off Liz about the police thing or the safe community thing, I also reached out to Erin Adler at the Strip. And she's been, she's been working on something with the sex offender housing and restrictive zoning ordinances and stuff. So, I've been kind of keeping in the loop with her, so there's going to be potentially something coming out here. I don't know the timeline. But she, she's been, there's like eighty-five communities across the state, eighty-three or cities, two or counties that have passed these restrictive ordinances for either sex offenders, group homes, or assisted living type stuff. And so she's, she's writing like a series or an article or something on it. So, I want, I've been trying to get out in front of it. And again, this is one of the areas that I do love and want to, I, I see us in Scott County. And that's why I was happy to hear about Scale being on the ERTS thing or being supportive of that. I think down here in Scott County, we do, we do set, I take a lead a little bit in a lot of the human services, social services stuff with what Pam and those guys do in, in the human services world. So, I, I'm trying to, to keep her, you know, I, I know we don't have anything formal, besides the fact we don't restrict anything at this point in time. We don't have any ordinances that are illegal or discriminatory, as I would argue that those all are. So, it's out there. I, I've been working with her, so I'm sure I'll end up in there somewhere.
We probably won't ever hear anything about it till, till a bunch of neighbors get a notice that somebody's moving into their neighborhood. And that's when we're going to hear about it. Just, I know Savage is working on an apartment building that they just took over, trying to find the last resident another place to live. But because he's a sex offender, they're having a very hard time finding another place in Scott County. Even, even to the tune where they have to pay an extra thousand dollars a month, the city does, for an apartment. They can't even get him in.
So, and I guess where I'm, I'm trying to go with it is I want us to be a, a leader. I think we can do some innovative things, and I think we can kind of push some of these other cities in the metro especially to, to think differently or to not be stupid in past discriminatory ordinances. And, I don't know. So, I'm going to keep pushing Elkanu Market as we're, and, and I think, I see that as, how can we be attractive? And we're open to, and we're safe, and we can still, you know, welcome anybody into our community, whether you have a disability or a senior, whatever. And I think that's something that we can, I don't know, use.
I did talk to the housing person at the Met Council, at the Met, Met Council's fiftieth anniversary. And he saw an article in one of the papers, and he came over and talked to me and thanked me for the article and the comments. And he said, he will be looking and getting ahold of our staff here, and he's looking for roundabout ways for us to get help to do affordable housing, not just straight, you know, straight scoring and all these things, all the different programs and stuff. He says, "There is money available that they should be able to find ways to help if we could, if we can come up with a project." They're willing to look for ways to help outside the box. So, we are making an impact all, all the way through. Any further discussion? Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.